In the meantime, let's move to the Pledge of Allegiance. Oh, Mr. Robertson, would you do the prayer today?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Do I have it?
Pledge of Allegiance to the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, and the God of freedom, liberty, and justice for all.
And our community prayer by Selectman Robertson.
Almighty God, humbly we pray your blessings as we concern our life with the opportunity to serve our community. Enhance us with your spirit of dignity and selflessness. May we become instruments of support and understanding as we seek to bring an environment of trust and purpose among all who provide the many services that make us all that we can become. Help us achieve the goals of our commitment to this office and is now our responsibility. And especially, we lift our prayers for all the citizens of our community that we have been allowed to serve, that they may discover the fullness and joy of life that we all seek, and keep those serving in our armed forces and our first responders in our hearts and our thoughts. Amen.
Amen. Now, we arrive at citizen participation. If there are any citizens that would like to address the board this evening, we'd ask them to step forward. Please try to confine your remarks to about three minutes so that we can have other people address the board that might want to, because we do allow about 10 minutes for this portion of the meeting. Would someone like to address the board? Please step forward and give us your name and address, please.
Nancy Ryan, Three Presidents Way. I'd like to speak a few minutes on the $15,000 that we got from Representative Giffen's office because we didn't put it toward the feasibility study. And, you know, we were told we could use it, but it would have to be used for anything directly related to the Council on Aging. I guess one of the questions that we had was 5,000 of the 15,000 was taken out and it's going to be put back into the feasibility study because 5,000 was spent for expenses. And I guess the question we have is what were the expenses that the 5,000 that we desperately need is going to be taken out of that 15,000? And the director of the COA and I, we just had a talk a couple of weeks ago, we were just talking about, you know, different things that we desperately need to be done at the COA. And one of them was, you know, just really giving the place a thorough cleaning, just for starters, taking down the wallpaper, doing a, you know, painting the place, a thorough professional cleaning, like a Servpro to come in and the places. The one remark that I hear through the, I've heard throughout the years is that the place is so dirty. I know you get the heebie-jeebies, Ron Clark, when you come in, so, you know, maybe if we could just kind of get, get the place thoroughly cleaned. And the director told me that there's absolutely no way that the wallpaper is going to be taken down. I don't know that there's going to be any painting done. The cleaning is going to be done by a couple of people from the DPW. And we think it just really, really needs a deeper cleaning than that. And I hope that's not going to stop. The ceiling tiles are falling down. You know, there's just getting the inside of it so cleaned up. So I think we, I think we have a concern with that, that we just want to make sure, you know, we fought so hard to keep the COA where it is until we get a new one, that we would just really, really want to make sure that inside out is just going to be maintained. We did hear the other day, we were at the Board of Directors meeting, and we kept hearing that there's no money, there's no money, there's no money. There has to be money somewhere in the budget to, you know, to, if this building has to last another 10 years, it, we just have to put some money into it. So that's, that's kind of, you know, my concern for tonight. And hopefully, you're the elected officials, and, you know, hopefully, you're just gonna really, really take a good, hard look at everything that really needs to be done there and just not let it go by the wayside. It's too beautiful of a building to go into rock and ruin.
All right, I'll ask the Selectmen's Office to put together a list of the expenses so that you can understand what those are.
Okay.
And then I know that we talked at town meeting that Dave Seidenhoff
Yes.
was going to do, be going down there shortly to do a complete look over the entire building, get an understanding of what the needs were, both from infrastructure and just, I think, probably the nitty-gritty of the cleaning and so forth. So I will, we'll make sure that we talk to Dave and ask him to get down there and get that done. And then from that point on, we can get together and figure out how we can, you know, attack some of the issues down there.
Oh, great. That would be fine, Ron, and we'd really appreciate it. The one other thing, as, as we're there all the time, do you think we could have a little, we could have input in what we see there? Because we're there all the time as far as, you know, ceiling tiles falling down and just the nitty-gritty of getting the...
Yeah, I mean, I, I think we can ask when Dave goes down
Okay, if he would look into that.
to let, let him, let you know when he's going to be there
Yeah.
so that you can perhaps meet with him for a couple of minutes and pass on some of your concerns.
Oh, wonderful. Thank you very much.
Sure.
Appreciate it.
Was there anyone else that wanted to address the board tonight? Any other citizens? All right, there being none, we'll move on. We will skip over the reorganization of the board until our chair arrives. Right now, it's a, this is one of those fun moments that we had up, have up here, where we get to recognize some outstanding achievement that's taken place in the town. And we have a couple of students that we want to recognize tonight that have achieved just, it's, I was, I was bowled over when I heard what they had managed to achieve in national competition. And I want to intro, well, I guess, how's this going to start? Who's going to speak first? All right, we're going to have Mr. Patrick Mahar, who some of you may remember, used to be the school business manager. He has served in a advisory capacity for the culinary unit as they've gone on and competed over the last few years. And I believe you were involved this year as well. So I'd ask Mr. Mahar to come up and give us an explanation and so we can arrive at a better understanding of exactly just how great an achievement this was from these And I believe we have Kevin Schott and Darren Foster joining Mr. Mahar?
We're going to off the mic.
Okay. No need to check with me, Mr. Mahar. You just do what you feel needs to be done.
That's the way I typically did it. Well, we'd like to appreciate the opportunity to, to be in front of the board tonight. I have to send along the regrets from Chef Portolans, who had a family obligation and couldn't make it. He was the instructor and really the driving force behind the competition. But just to briefly give you a, a little background about this, we've got a culinary program up at Carver High School. It is, services well over 100 kids a year, go through the classes. And they do a particular curriculum that's from the National Association of Restaurants. It's called the Pro Start Curriculum. And the National Association, they also have their state association. So we've got the Mass Restaurant Association that, that we deal with. And what they do is, on an annual basis, they have a competition. And the competition first is by state, and then in some cases by region, and then it goes to a national level. And it is both in the culinary cooking side of it, and the part that, that these guys did, and the part that I've been involved in for a number of years, is the restaurant management competition, where they actually come up with a, with a concept and a, a restaurant proposal. It's quite detailed and so forth. So Chef Portolans has been doing this for about 10 years. And in that timeframe, and I've worked with him for about seven of those years, and in that timeframe, we have had five groups win the state competition and go to the national competition. In that respect, the last three groups have come in eighth in the nation, sixth in the nation, and these boys took it to a new level where they came in fourth in the nation. It is just an accomplishment that, I mean, I think about it sometimes, and just the magnitude of it is, is almost overwhelming.
Could you just mention, you, you mentioned to me, for instance, just in the state of Texas, how many groups?
Yeah, how many was that?
120.
120 groups just in the state of Texas.
So 120 groups in Texas competed to come out of Texas?
Yeah, and then one, one came out.
And then only one, so, and the same thing, I assume we had multiple groups in Massachusetts?
Texas, Florida, New York, you know, some of the big, bigger states is just unbelievable. There were, not every state was represented this year, but there were 46 states that were represented.
3,500 schools.
3,500 schools. And these guys came in fourth
Wow.
in the nation.
Very cool.
I mean, you gotta, you just gotta think about that and let that sink in a little bit as to the magnitude of that. And, you know, we were talking to the school committee last night, just to, you know, think about two kids from Carver, come up with an idea, come up with a concept, worked extremely hard to put this thing together and practice and practice and practice and put this proposal together. It's almost, if you've ever watched the, the show Shark Tank, it's very, very similar. No, really, it really is, and I told the kids that too. I said, watch, watch Shark Tank, because that's what it is. You're going in front of a group of, a panel of judges, and you're trying to sell them a restaurant concept. And they're asking you questions. And these guys were so prepared, and they had it down so well. But, and it is just, it's just unbelievable, you know, what they've done, the accomplishment that they made. And I'm going to have them talk in a minute.
I was going to say, could we hear a little bit about the concept? I'd like to hear about the concept.
They want to just give you a little bit of background about that.
And ask if they're taking investors.
And now, what we will do is, is have the boys talk about, you know, how the concept came together, what it was like to be in the national competition, and, you know, to get called up on the stage with, with four other groups. So who wants to start? Go ahead.
All right, yeah, so, as...
Go ahead and identify yourself.
Kevin Schott. As Mr. Mahar was saying, the Nationals was something, it was overwhelming at first, to be entirely honest. We got there, we just didn't know what to expect. We were on a ride up on the bus from school, and I remember both of us feeling kind of sick, like we were just holding our stomachs, we were just really nervous. But once we got there, we were like, hey, we got this. And then, as you were saying, when we crossed that stage and just seeing, having all these people see the work we put into it, it was just a really, it was a really good feeling. And to be honest, at the beginning of the year, I didn't, I didn't expect to do, to do this program, because I just got put into culinary at the beginning of the year, and I was like, oh, this is going to be, it's going to be a pretty cool class. And so Chef approached me, Chef Portolans approached me, and he asked me, hey, do you want to do this? Well, we were originally going to do this program called DECA, but then, as we were looking at all the finances, it was just going to be too expensive for us to do. So we just decided to do the Pro Star program, and I'm actually, obviously, very happy we did, because, I mean, fourth in the nation is definitely something to be proud about. And, yeah, so, just overall, the experience itself is just something that's going to stick with me for many years to come. And I'm definitely doing it again next year to finish senior year with, hopefully, first place.
Outstanding.
So to give you some idea of what the restaurant was like, the restaurant was called Bry. And Bry is a South African word. There's actually 23 languages spoken in South Africa. There's only one word that means the same thing in all 23 languages. That's the word Bry. Means to cook over an open flame. So what Bry was, was an international restaurant that served all things over an open flame. So it was essentially a barbecue restaurant where you could find Korean cuisine, you could find things from all over the world. And essentially, the, the main part of our proposal was one of our marketing strategies, called the Passport. It, it was basically, once you traveled to five countries in a row or six countries in total, you get a, a free meal from the highlighted country, because we rotate the countries monthly. And it was definitely very, very in-depth. I, Kevin and I probably each put in 100 hours minimum. I can't, or, leading up to the competition, I couldn't remember within several months before where we didn't do at least something little every single day. We stayed after two or three hours every single day after school. We would get out sometimes after, like, the track kids were, were finishing up their practice. And it was definitely very rewarding. It started off, it was just Kevin and I and Chef, and then we threw Mr. Mahar into the mix, and then...
And still did well.
But then, we won the state competition, and that was, that was great. But what we didn't expect was not, not just the community of Carver helping us out, but also the state. We weren't just Kevin and I, we weren't just Carver anymore, we were Massachusetts. And there was people from all around that were clamoring to help us. They wanted to see us succeed, and it was, it was such a blessing to see. For, for example, Mamma Mia's, to name one, that really helped us out. They gave us probably eight hours of their time. We gave them our pitch. They, they really liked it. They gave us their head of marketing, and she helped us make our posters, things like that. She actually printed our posters for us, too. But it was just such an enriching experience, just to represent Carver and Massachusetts in this competition, and I'm so grateful that Chef chose Kevin and I.
Very cool.
Tremendous.
So it was a, it was a wonderful experience for everybody, and I'm just, you know, so, so proud of these boys and the fact that I was able to play a small role still in the success of the students at, through the Carver system. But, but one of the nicest parts of it, I mentioned, I mentioned this last night, one of the, one of the best parts of it, and although the parents are here tonight, but because the competition was just down the road in Providence, the parents were also at the competition. And they were able to see their boys perform and see their boys get called up on the stage. And just the, the, just the, the look of pride on, on their faces was, was just amazing. It was so heartwarming and amazing to, to, for, that was the first time that in any of these competitions that we've actually had the, the opportunity for the parents to come along. And it was just so great to, to have them there. So if anybody has any questions, the boys would...
Comments from the board?
Certainly like to answer.
I don't have any comments other than completely congratulations, but I knew that lady was a mom. She's been smiling from, from the time she walked in here. I have not seen a smile come off her face all morning. Congratulations, that's just unbelievably great news. Yeah, hard work.
Sarah?
Yes, I, I agree. Congratulations to you guys. That's a big deal. Very proud of both of you. Thank you for representing Carver.
Mark?
I just want to echo what the rest of the board said. It's a tremendous accomplishment. You should be very proud of yourselves, and thank you for the way you've represented the town.
Anything else, Mr. Clark? Just, you know, Pat and I talk fairly frequently, and over the last few years, he's told me about the success that the team has had. But I, I couldn't believe when I found out you finished fourth. I mean, that is just, when you think of their, you know, 120 teams in Texas, so you figure there are multiple teams in all the other 46 states. So to finish fourth is, is just spectacular. It's just such a, you know, I mean, a little, little town of Carver here just has so much pride in what you've accomplished. This is just spectacular. So we really thank you for, for your efforts, and we are looking, now, we're not going to hold you to first place next year. However, Mr. Robertson's recently retired, he's looking for someplace to invest some money, so... And to work. When you, and, and to work as well, that's correct. So that when you get this off the ground, this is the man you want to talk to in order to get that initial, you know, he's one of the sharks on the board, so that you...
One of my ex, one of my ex-good friends, Ron Clark.
But no, I just, I just can't say anything, I just, Pat, Pat has told me that, and you've mentioned the time and effort that goes into this. So it's just spectacular, and just, congratulations. It's just wonderful.
First, I want to apologize for being late. Unfortunately, I do have a paying job, and I got tied up there. But I'm glad I got back in time to go ahead and hear what you gentlemen have been able to accomplish. I think, you know, the idea of your restaurant is truly thinking out of the box. And I can think of a certain land down well south of here in the state of Florida that should look in to what you guys are proposing, because it would fit right in with their restaurants from around the world. Because that was really a great concept. Your folks, your family, the school, the town, everybody, so proud of you that you were able to accomplish this. I mean, like Mr. Clark said, who would have thunk, little Carver, all the way up to fourth place, and again, congratulations. Now, if I could have you guys come up front and have the board meet me around also?
You can join us, Mr. Mahar.
Yes, both definitely.
Kevin and Darren, I don't remember if you said you'd introduce yourselves. My memories, short-term memories are vast. It's getting there, but not quite. But this is a certificate of recognition from the Board of Selectmen for taking fourth place at the National Pro Start Invitational 2018 for the Board of Selectmen. Congratulations. You're welcome.
So we'll, you both get here next year.
Outstanding.
No, that's okay. Thank you anyway.
And we didn't reorganize, that, I was just filling in for you. So that's next on the agenda, Alan.
I mean, I still have a chance? You do. Good.
No, he means a chance the other way, no. Mr. Clark, is this yours? Oh, yes. Thank you very much.
Okay, I understand, for Mr. Clark, the vice chair, did a little bit out of order, so I guess we need to do our reorganization of the board. So I will turn the meeting over to the town administrator.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I'll call for nominations for the chairmanship of the Carver Board of Selectmen.
I'd like to nominate Alan Dunham for chair of the Carver Board of Selectmen.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, is there any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Unanimous vote? Congratulations, Chairman, I mean, Mr. Alan Dunham for being the chairman in the next 2019 year, FY19.
Thank you very much, I think.
Oh, no.
I think I learned a lot the first year, and hopefully I'll learn even more this year, and I look forward to you guys helping me out along the way, because lord knows I need it. And Mark, by the way, congratulations, welcome to the board.
Thank you.
All right, I'll entertain a motion for vice chair.
I'll nominate Ron for that position.
Second. Any other nominations? Hearing none. All those in favor, Mr. Clark being vice chair for FY2019, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? It's unanimous. All right. Moving on, we have adopting of the policies of the Board of Selectmen. Do we have them here, they're in our packets? So let's go ahead. First is the Board of Selectmen Agenda Policy. This is a policy for setting agendas for the Board of Selectmen meetings as follows effective as of April 24th. It basically outlines when we want department heads to go ahead and get us items for an agenda. All members of the board, as well as elected representatives of the town, can submit agenda items also. However, if written material is not received by the office by the deadline, the item will not be placed on the agenda, will more than likely go to the next, so. And it does talk about citizen participation. There will be one session of citizen participation at each regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of Selectmen. The session will be held after the Pledge of Allegiance and any announcements made prior to the town administrator notes. Session will be, as before, five to 10 minutes in length, and we, again, will ask no speaker to read more than three minutes. Am I here a motion on this?
I'd make a motion to approve the agenda policy.
I'll second that.
Any further, any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the Board of Selectmen policy for setting agendas, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes 5-0. Next is our financial management policies, adopted on February 11th, 2014, revised 5/13/14, 3/3/15, approved by town meeting on 6/16/2014, updated again in 5/3/16, and approved by the Board of Selectmen again on 4/24/17. I'm not going to go ahead and read it all, because I think we're all fairly familiar with them, so I'll take a motion.
Make a motion to approve?
Second. Okay. Motion made in second to continue with the financial management policies. Hearing none.
Yeah.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Let's take care, takes care of the financial management policies. All right, we have also the Code of Conduct for the Board of, of the Board of Selectmen. Basically, it gives us guidelines of how we expect the board to go ahead and behave, not only with each, in relation to each other, but in relation to the various departments of the town and the town administrator, the assistant administrator, and a proper chain of command to go through to discuss things if we need to talk to a, somebody else. I'll take a motion.
Move to approve the Code of Conduct for the Board of Selectmen?
Do I hear a second?
Second that.
Discussion?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I, I, as in the past, I proudly am voting against this, particularly Part 4B, which limits our contact, tells us we are unable to speak with town employees. The reason for my objection to that is that I think that these are our employees and these are our constituents. And I, I just think that's wrong. So if it means I have to vote against the whole thing, so be it. I don't have a problem with the rest of that, but, but I take issue with that.
Okay. Very good. Any other comments? Hearing none. All those in favor of adopting, once again, the Code of Conduct to the Board of Selectmen, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? When opposed, motion passes 4-1. All right. Now, we have the Carver's Board of Selectmen Suggested Blogger's Code of Conduct. This was started again back in 2000, February... in 2000, February 2014, when it was first adopted. Been approved every year since. It's basically just setting guidelines on how to go ahead and deal with, you know, the blogger sphere, so to speak. Before we get into a discussion of it, I'll take a motion.
Motion to approve.
Do I hear a second?
Second that.
All right. Motion made and seconded. Discussion.
I think, I think there's an updated sheet too, Alan. It might be the next page where blogging has been changed to social media.
Oh, yeah. But that's what I was going to get at was, do we want to change the whole thing from a title of Blogger's Code of Conduct to a social media code of conduct? I see it on the second page. So, you, so basically you're saying that second page would replace, ah, okay.
I'll make, make a motion to approve the second page then.
Do I hear a second? Second. All right. I didn't find anything really for my own self. Is there any further discussion about changing our code of, our Blogger's Code to a social media code of conduct?
No, I, I just think that this is a broader interpretation and it brings in Twitter and Facebook and all the other, you know, activities into account and under the same guidance.
Any other comments? Hearing none. All those in favor of changing the Blogger's Code of Conduct to the social media code of conduct and adopting that as an official policy of the board, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That'll be a five zero. And I believe that is it for the policies. Did I, Elaine? Okay, good. With that being taken care of, we'll now move on to the Town Administrator update.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. A couple of updates. First is the storm cleanup is still ongoing. The DPW and our Operation Maintenance Department has been working diligently on trying to clean up the town after our multiple nor'easters. And we anticipate having a landscaping contractor for another two weeks that's removing material off of public property, public ways. That's going to, assisting the DPW in moving forward. And we anticipate getting some federal reimbursement for their work as well. For a few weekends, we had, the Operation Maintenance Department had a brush day down at the old DPW facility. And right now, we haven't heard any more requests for additional brush. So, they're, they're not going to be operating that on Saturdays as they were to help people, the residents clean up after the storm. Should there be a need in the future, then we will look at opening that up on a temporary basis. Keep in mind that all brush and leaves are no longer being accepted at the Carver, Marion, Wareham, two transfer stations, both in Marion, Rochester. Those facilities are full. And again, no additional material is allowed at those locations. One more thing I want to make mention to is that, for those that have noticed, all the pine trees that came down in this past storm, we're also going to be moving forward of removing a bunch of the white pines between Town Hall and the library. They're just sitting out in the open. Many of them lost many of their branches. But we're going to be looking at taking all of those white pines down and replacing it, you know, in the future with a different type of species. Because we're afraid with some of those buildings, some of them are actually in striking distance of the library and also the gazebo and some, and potentially even a little bit of Town Hall. So, those are going to be coming down in the near future when we bring a crane in or a large bucket truck to take those down more as a safety precaution. You probably noticed, some, many of them have died too. So, I'm just giving everybody a heads up that, you know, those are being taken down for safety reasons. So, let's see. And then one final note I know was brought up today about the cleanliness of the council and aging facility. What we are going to be doing, I believe it's either this Saturday or next Saturday, we're going to have at least eight of our employees, our operation and maintenance employees going down and doing a, doing a complete overhaul of the Atwood House. They're going to be power washing the outside where there's a bunch of little bugs and everything that are all on the outside of the facility. And they're going to be going through room by room and cleaning each room as a complete cleanup project with a team of people going through there. And well, and as well as they'll be doing some additional painting where it needs to be. I think we're going to look at repainting the porches on the front of the building and some of the faded murals that are in the property too. So, there is going to be a significant cleanup that's either this Saturday or next Saturday, just based upon schedules.
And in addition to that, I think it would still be worthwhile to have, when Dave goes down to sort of do an overview, to have him meet with a couple of the folks down there for, once we get past that.
Yep. So, that's where we stand on that project.
Before you move on, a question. Have we heard back from the state? I know they did put in officially for a declaration of disaster for the March, the first two March storms for basically all the coastal counties. Do, have we heard how the state's doing on that?
I have heard that it's being submitted and it meets the thresholds. I do not know how it's been received yet down in, in Washington, but I do know that they have all the appropriate numbers to submit it, is what I've been told.
Okay. Thank you.
The Police Station Committee has been diligently at work. They've gone through, I believe it was eight or nine proposals that we received for a project manager coming into the site. They went forward and had about five, six hours of interviews with four different companies. Out of that interview process, two, two firms rose to the top. So, they had their A and the B team. And we have negotiated with the A team, which is going to be Dataless. Dataless was also the OPM that oversaw the construction of the fire station. So, they had now been hired. And on Thursday, in the Goods and Service Bulletin, we're actually advertising for an architect designer. So, that's the next phase to move forward with selecting a designer to come in. And then from there, then the committee is going to be working with the chief and looking at all different alternative sites on the, the Town Hall Government Center. And then they're going to be bringing to the Selectmen in the future their selection on what would be the ideal site. Since you are the stewards of all public property, it would need your approval as to what site for them to locate. So, again, they're going to come back with their final recommendation. That's probably not going to be for another two months. By the time the architect gets on board and goes through all the review and the analysis of stuff, but I'm just giving you a forewarning that that's in the process. Any questions on that? Okay. Next item is the Carver, Marion, Wareham Regional Refuge District. I have spoken about this at several meetings along with Dave Robinson. We do have our other two committee members, Bill Dugan and John Cotter, that also are the three representatives along with Dave Robinson to the committee. We have been meeting pretty much monthly and the Town Administrators have been doing a lot of work behind the scenes. As I mentioned, you know, the, the organization to some extent is bankrupt and we're working on rebuilding the organization. We have an operational window for the next two years and then we have a long-term plan as to what happens when our agreements are no longer in play for the Cavanta receiving free garbage drop-off, I'm sorry, tipping fees. Keep in mind that as a result of not having to pay for garbage, Carver, Marion, and Wareham have been really, you know, benefiting. Right now, the, the typical tipping fee for putting MSW, municipal solid waste, into a receiving facility is about $80 a ton. We're paying zero. It's anticipated that that $80 is going to only be going up in the near future. The reason for that is the state currently produces around seven million tons of municipal solid waste annually. It had the facilities to handle about six million, which meant one million tons was being shipped out of state. Over the next 18 months, the state's going to lose about one and a half to two million tons of capacity. That means that you're going to have up to three million tons of municipal solid waste that's going to have to be transported out of the state. Of the four million that the state can handle, 1.1 million tons is handled by Cavanta. And there's a couple other small waste energy facilities around the state to take it as well. And there are a few small landfills. But right now, there's no private ventures or state venture that's going forward and permitting a new landfill. As a result, this material is being sent out, it will be being sent out of state on a more regular basis. The second thing that impacts this is recycling right now is costing more than disposing of municipal solid waste. For example, a local vendor is charging $110 a ton for recyclables. Why do I say that? Well, right now, the only two components that are commodities on the market is any type of metal material. That still has some market value. It's still a commodity. It can still be sold as scrap and melted down. The other thing is corrugated cardboard. Clean corrugated cardboard. Basically, when you're in a warehouse and you take all your boxes and you fold them up and there's clean and there's no food or debris or anything in this, that's clean. And that actually has a market to be resold. As it relates to glass, plastic, and paper, right now, you have to pay to get rid of that. And tied into that, and I've just talked about the five products separately, but what's happened is the industry's gone to what's called a single stream. So, you dump in all of your waste or all of your recyclables into one thing and it gets mixed and sorted. And the bottom line is that it gets contaminated. So, if you have a bottle, a soda bottle that's in a container that has paper and that soda bottle leaks, well, then that paper's contaminated. And then it's, it's more difficult to sell the product off. I'm only mentioning that because the whole industry's changing. So, you are going to be hearing, you know, over the next few years that Carver's going to have to figure out and Carver residents are going to have to figure out how they dispose of garbage in the future. It's not that we want to, when I say we, the Carver, Marion, Wareham Regional Refuge District, it's not that that district wants to start charging more for things. It's that it has to. Because it can no longer dump it for free. The market's changing. There's, the, the recycling component is costing money where it used to be something that you could recycle and make money off of. That doesn't exist. So, the, the world's changing. The solid waste business is changing. The recycling business is changing. And therefore, the, the district has to change how it's going to operate in the future, which is going to result in consumers in our three towns happen, going to have to pay a fair market rate for the material that they've been paying at a unfair market rate because they've been getting it for free. So, it's more of an educational thing than I've just been describing that, kind of a long story to say we're all working on this. But just forewarned is that there are going to have to be changes in the future. What else can I add to that, Mr. Robertson?
Lot of trash talking there, wasn't there? Hang around with Ron too much. There will be options. It's not a one source fits all. I've heard from many people. So, when we're done making the proposals, just be comfortable to know that if you want to use your old one pickup service, you still can. There are many options going to be available. So, that's my only input.
No, thank you for that because I, it's really important is people have preferences for who they use as a hauler. And it's not that I think the district has any intention of telling people who they have to use. I think it's more of a standpoint is they'll go out and try to negotiate the best rate on, and economies of scale thing. So, if all the towns choose, or all the residents choose X company, X company hopefully will be able to get it for you at a lower cost basis. But if you want to use your other vendor and maybe it's the same cost, or maybe it's less, no one's going to stop you from doing that. What we are trying to do too, though, is since we are kind of a regional group, is that we've noticed the towns have different regulations, different permit fees, different fine fees. And in order to maintain a district, we all have to play by the same set of rules, if you will. So, we're working with the state to develop best practices for hauling regulations. So, that every hauler in every town has to operate in the same clean, efficient way. And, and that'll allow for us to all compare apples to apples. The same thing with the fine structure is that, you know, once you start, once people have to pay a little bit more for garbage disposal, we don't want people to feel that, oh, it might be cheaper for us to dump. Well, we're going to have to work with the towns and increase enforcement on illegal dumping. And one of the things you have to do with that is you have to make sure there's a sizable fine if someone gets caught to, as a deterrent for that. So, we're going to be talking about that with all the towns. And I guess those are the two main things that fines, fees, and then regulations, we'd like to have consistent with all the towns. A lot of this can be approved, the, the hauling component can be approved by the Board of Health at each town. But again, we want to get on a consistent rules and regulations across the communities. And that's all I have for that good news.
All right. Before moving on to the Board of Selectmen update, just a little update. The Town Administrator didn't mention them, but the middle high school sports complex is, has started. They were taking over the last couple of weeks demolishing all the buildings, taking out all the fences. And if they haven't started as of today, they'll be starting this week sometime with the heavy equipment, taking out the site and starting that project down the road. Still looking at having it be open for business with its first football game sometime this fall. So, that's moving forward. Also, the elementary school continues to be worked on. Seems like they're really getting near the end. For those of you who don't have Facebook, the Building Committee and the School Department is having kind of a hail and farewell to the old Governor John Carver.
June 9th, 3 o'clock.
3 o'clock, 3 to 7. Basically, it's a chance for people to go in, especially some of us that were there when it was first built practically, to go ahead and sign the walls and kind of reminisce, you know, where you were in first grade with Mrs. Burbank and then Mrs. Burgess upstairs from Mr. Corsi. So, you know. So, that's coming along. Open house for the new elementary school will be towards the end of August. I know they're going to be having lots going on with the different students actually giving tours of the various sections. So, the building projects are, some are just starting, some have yet to be started, and others are nearing their completion. So, we're making progress on those. All right. Board of Selectmen update. Ms. Hewens.
Thank you. First of all, I wanted to congratulate our newest member, Mark. Congratulations. I also wanted to remind the public that the Memorial Day Parade kicks off at 9:00 AM.
9:30.
9:30. Form Up is at 9.
Form Up at 9.
Form Up is at 9. I beg your pardon. And that's on Monday, the May 28th, Memorial Day. And that will be right out here at the Sons of Veterans Building across the street. It's, hopefully it won't rain this year as it did the past two years. But it, it's really a, it's a solemn occasion, but it's also a joyful one because we have so many vets who walk in it as well. So, I hope everyone will be able to be there. And finally, I have, we're going to later on talk about the naming of a stream in Carver, Grumpy's Brook. His sister Claire Smith is here tonight. And she gave me a little flyer that I will put up somewhere with permission. This is for Grumpy's Cranberry Harvest 5K Run and Walk. And I know it's a long time out. It's not till November 3rd, but it is open. Sign up. Registration has opened, so people can do that. It's down at the 80 Makepeace Company on Tohonet Road in Wareham. And it's quite an event. Hopefully, we get to say a few words about Grumpy later on. And you'll see why this is an important event for the town. So, that's it.
Mr. Townsend.
I just have a couple of things. Last week, I had an opportunity to attend the ribbon cutting down at Old Colony High School for their new STEM, Science, Technology, Engineering, and Mathematics improvements. These were all funded through the Mass Workforce Skills Capital Grant. And I just wanted to congratulate them. John Banzel from Carver is the chairman of that Old Colony Regional School Committee. And they, they all did a great job down there. And I just want to remind the public that tomorrow, Carver Cares is having their community night at the High School Auditorium starting at 6:30. And if you want more information on that, carvercares@gmail.com. And I just want to thank the community again for electing me to the board. I appreciate the confidence you've shown in me. And I guess that's it.
Mr. Robertson.
I also wanted to mention the Memorial Day Parade. It's, there's a lot of effort that goes into the parade, all the logistics to make that happen. The Sons of Veterans Hall sponsors it. And there we have annual meetings to make sure that that goes off. So, please try to attend. There's an awful lot of work that goes into it. On a second point, I have On a second point, I have been considering having selectmen hours in the town hall somewhere and sometime, and, but I am stuck with the time that would be best suited for people to come in and ask questions or buy me a coffee. No, I'm only kidding, I'm only kidding. So I'm, I'm working on that. I'm working on that as we speak, but if you have an idea of when a better time would be for you or for somebody, please email me. Can be reached through the Carver website. Thank you.
Mr. Clark.
Well, a couple of things I had have already been mentioned. The Memorial Day Parade, again, 9:00 on the 28th, stepping off. I wanted to just also, again, just thank Helen Maroni for her service on the board. No reflection on you, Mark, but I enjoyed sitting next to Helen for a few years. But I, and I also want to congratulate Mark on joining us, and I know he'll be a valuable contributor to the board and bring a different perspective, different set of eyes at looking at things that we see very commonly. And also, the Sportsman's Club is having their annual breakfast this coming Saturday, 7:30 to 11:00. One of the best cheese and mushroom omelets I've ever had was last year at the Sportsman's Club, so that I would recommend if you have a chance to get by there. It's very reasonable, food's excellent, 7:30 to 11:00, right at the Sportsman's Club. And that's all I have.
Okay, and I will just continue on with that thought because this is their big fundraiser for their scholarship, and I've been able to go the last few years, and it is an excellent feed. So you get a lot, you have the ladies waiting on you. Usually, it's Mr. Johnson is the head chef back, and he does an excellent job.
I believe, Mr. Robertson said if we arrive when he does, he'll pick up the tab.
Ah, and what time would that be, Mr. Robertson?
To be determined.
I'll wait outside till I see you get there.
First off, I would like to, as I said, congratulate Mark on his election to the board. I'd also like to thank all the other members and congratulate the members of the town that ran and were elected. Sean Clancy as town moderator, Sharon Clark on the RDA, and I know I'm going to end up missing somebody, but Mr. Sinclair also on the RDA to fiddle out one more year. Kevin.
Jen Bogart on.
Jen Bogart for the, on the planning board. So we've had some new people that ran this year and were elected, so that's a good thing. It's always kind of, it's a little sad when you have positions up for election and you only have one person running. That's not really giving the citizens of Carver a choice. So next year, once you get towards January, it starts getting time to pull nomination papers. There's a lot of people that want, say they want to be involved in town, and that will be your chance to go ahead and do it, plus going, attending the meetings as they come. Attend the planning board meetings, attend the RDA, the Conservation Commission, the North Carver Water District. All these meetings, they're public meetings. They're your meetings for your town. So you have the, you know, almost an obligation to make sure you stay abreast of what's happening in town. It gets a little frustrating when you hear people maybe complain a little bit, but you ask them, "Did you go to town meeting?" "Well, no, I was too busy." "Well, did you vote in the town election?" "Well, no, I had something else to do." "Have you gone to any of the board meetings?" So you know what's going on, so you have all the facts. "Well, I just heard." And "I just heard" is not a way of getting facts. You know, going to these different meetings and listening to the discussions, that's how you get the facts. You know, people can agree and agree to disagree. I've got no problem with that. In fact, that's how we get better, is, you know, having people challenge our positions. But I just ask that people do it, having done the research and trying to get the facts of going in. Now, you can argue the facts, but then that's fine, because we all hear things the same way. I know there, somebody said, you know, once, you know, "I'm sure you're not hearing what I'm saying," because, you know, there's a breakdown in communication. So I'll get off my soapbox now. I just ask that, you know, the town, it's good to get more people involved, and I hope we'll continue to see that because it's good for the town. Fresh ideas, it's always a good thing. And I was going to mention Memorial Day, but that's already been mentioned enough times. So the next thing we'll have will be the.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Could I just add something real quick?
Certainly.
I also wanted to thank the town for the opportunity to run for selectmen, and I very much appreciate being reelected. Thank you.
All right, moving on. Approved sale of bond anticipation note and to complete the associated paperwork. I guess Ms., we're going to have Meg and company come on up? And we should get our pens out?
Yes, with lots of ink.
There's four, four copies of each that needs to be signed.
They all have stickies on them. So it's just the pages with the stickies.
Then what is it that we're being asked to sign?
Laurie is, Laurie will be. Laurie Henall, treasurer, collector. And we're here to have you take certain vote on a rollover of our $3 million, $3 million bond anticipation note for the middle school, high school repairs. We have several documents from our financial advisor that need to be signed. Some important points that I want to share with you is that the town had received a total of three bids on its recent $3 million note sale. Eastern Bank was the winning bidder at a net rate of 1.928%. The rate does take into account the timing and amount of principal and interest payments, as well as the receipt of the premium at the closing of the note that was issued. The difference between the three bids were very competitive. The proceeds of the notes are being used to, again, finance the middle school, high school repairs. And again, it's just the rollover. The town does plan to issue bonds for this project to retire this issue of note on the October 2018 maturity date. This award of the note is required to be approved by the Board of Selectmen in accordance with the state law. The attached vote was prepared by Lock and Lord, our bond counsel. And again, it just provides a standard vote for the Board of Selectmen to approve.
Do we need a motion to?
I was just going to mention, do you want to state how much premium we received on the issue? Because as Laurie said, there were, it was a competitive sale, which again, always speaks to the fact that our financial policies and financial standing bode well for the town in that it is, that when we go out to market, it is something that is competitive, competitively viewed, and the amount of premium that we received was?
And you just want to, just to explain what?
Premium is?
Yes.
So premium is, so if, when you go out to market, they will, if you have a good bonds, or good bond rating, they will actually pay you for the issuance of your, of your bonds, or bond anticipation note in this case. And we are borrowing until October. We had borrowed, we did an initial ban for this, for the middle school, high school repairs last May, and it's coming to this month. That's why we're rolling it over, and we're rolling it over to October when we will go out to a long-term borrowing for the police station, the library, the truck and field, and for the middle school, high school repairs. So this just holds us over because at the end of the year, you cannot have a deficit in a capital projects fund. DOR won't allow that, so this just holds us over to that point, also for cash flow purposes.
Tied into the rollover and just explain that in a little bit more detail is, with our stabilization account, the board allows us to use our own funds to borrow from on a temporary basis. But as Meg was saying, is that has, and Laurie said, that has to be closed out at the end of the fiscal year, which is why last May, we had to borrow that to carry us through for a year. And again, that was a, what did we borrow last year?
It was a $3 million.
$3 million, okay. And then, you know, we're in the same position here until we can go out to the permanent financing. But what we use too is, is we continue to use our stabilization funds as, as a bank that we borrow from ourselves, and then that way, we're not paying interest to some third party, and then at the end of the fiscal year, we've got to close that out. So you'll see that as the next bullet too, is for next years, we'll need to start the whole process over again. But our goal is, as Meg said, is that in this, this late next fall, is, or this coming fall, is that that's where we go out for permanent financing for everything. We do one big bond. And the reason for that too is you have high closing costs if you're doing small bonds, whereas if you put them all together, A, you get more competitive bids on it, and B, you save in a lot of administrative costs, part of our financial plan.
And I'm assuming we're still getting a very good bond rating?
Yes.
Are they clamoring for our business?
I would say so. So we have a couple of votes that the board will need to make tonight. Laurie's got the wording for those.
It's in the packet. It's in the packet.
Go on here, vote of the Board of Selectmen.
It needs a majority vote on that.
Do we have the wording?
I have the wording, and it's a lot of it.
Yes.
I think you can cite the page and document, I believe, and have that moved because you have it in, be memorialized into the record so you don't have to read 26 pages. It's not 26, but it's long.
My first question is, who is the clerk of the Board of Selectmen?
I think we just named someone last year, I don't think.
Yeah, I think we use the chairman as the clerk, and then we have the town clerk certify everything.
Okay. Because the first vote here is, "I, the clerk of the Board of Selectmen of the Town of Carver, Massachusetts, certify that at a meeting of the board held May 15, 2018, of which meeting, all members of the board were duly notified, at which a quorum was present, the following votes were unanimously passed, all which appear upon the official record of the board in my custody." So do we have to do one, two, three, four, five? You want six votes?
Yes.
Yes.
You can actually combine all those.
Huh?
You can combine all those into one vote.
They're listed separately.
I think we should vote them separately. All right, first thing for consideration for vote. Vote that we hereby determine in accordance with general law, chapter 70B, that the amount of the cost of the middle high school repair project authorized by a vote of the town passed April 13, 2015, Article 7C, not being paid by the school facilities grant is $2,710,210, and we hereby approve of the issuance of notes and bonds in such amount under said GL, GL, chapter 70B.
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That one's passed. Further vote, to approve the sale of $3 million at 2.8% general obligation bond anticipation notes, the notes, of the town dated May 25, 2018, and payable October 5, 2018, to Eastern Bank at par and accured interest, if any, plus a premium of $9,446.67.
Move the motion? Oh, I'm sorry, no, Mark, go ahead. So moved.
Second.
In seconded, discussion, hearing none. All those in favor of this vote, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, 5-0. Further, we need to vote that the town treasurer and the Board of Selectmen be and hereby are authorized to execute and deliver significant events, disclosure, undertaking, and compliance with SEC Rule 15C 2-12 in such form as may be approved by bond council to the town, which undertaking shall be incorporated by reference in the notes for the benefit of the holders of the notes from time to time. Motion.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Second.
Discussion, hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, 5-0. Further vote, that we authorize and direct the treasurer to establish post-insurance, federal tax compliance procedures in such form as a treasurer and bond council deem sufficient, or if such procedures are currently in place, to review and update said procedures in order to monitor and maintain the tax-exempt status of the notes.
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second. Further discussion, hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none, 5-0. One more further voted. You just wanted to see me work tonight.
That's a nice change of pace.
Yeah, you can, watch, you can still be chair, I can go out unextended sickly. That each member of the Board of Selectmen, the town clerk, and the town treasurer be and hereby are authorized to make any and all such actions, to take any and all such actions, and execute and deliver such certificates, receipts, or other documents as may be determined by them, or any of them, to be necessary or convenient to carry into effect the provisions of the foregoing votes.
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second. Discussion, hearing none. All those signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. All right, that one passes. Then at the end here, I certify, and this is the clerk of the Board of Selectmen, which we've been told, I guess it's me, that the votes were taken at a meeting open to the public, the public was here, that no vote was taken by secret ballot, we were all perfectly clear, that a notice stating the place, date, time, and agenda for the meeting, which agenda included the adoption of the above votes, was filed with the town clerk, and copy there posted in a manner conspicuous.
Dispicuous?
Yeah, thank you. Visible to the public at all hours in or on the municipal building that the office of the town clerk is located, or if applicable, in accordance with the alternative method of notice prescribed or approved by the Attorney General, is set forth in 940 CMR 29.03 Sub 2 Sub B, at least 48 hours, not including Saturday, Sunday, and legal holidays, prior to the time of the meeting, and reminded so posted at the time of the meeting, that no deliberations or decisions in connection with the sale of the notes were taken in executive session, all in accordance with general law, C 30A. Funny little symbol, funny little symbol, 18-25, as amended, dated May 15, 2018, and I am signing that. Yes.
What did the funny little symbol look like?
It's a little circle with a little thing like this and a little thing like that under it.
Section.
A what?
Section.
Section, okay, thank you.
I think Alan used the technical term.
Exactly. All right. Oh, these are all the clerk of the Board of Selectmen.
Yes.
So I'm the only one that has to sign this.
We have a question from the.
Yes.
You read off a rate of 2.9%, and you talked about a rate of 1.9%. Am I missing something?
It was 2.8.
Sale.
It's, right. But because of the premium that we are getting, it reduces the rate down to the.
It's actually built into it.
Right.
All of those motions are why nobody wants your job.
I'm very impressed that you picked, picked that up.
Why, it's on the finance committee.
Looks like the last one.
It's also nice that Dave signed first on down here.
That's why I gave it to him first.
I saw you use the paperwork.
It says the color paper. The color one.
Okay, that's the one.
Virtually responsible for.
I wondered why nobody was putting their name above mine.
You guys thought Matt would sign this one?
New kid on the block.
I appreciate that.
I'll call you when you get to the Sportsman's Club.
All right, we need to request approval to use stabilization funds in FY '19 for construction projects to reduce borrowing costs.
Can we back up one second?
Huh?
We actually have to have the town clerk sign off on a couple of those.
So you want me to start, hold?
Yeah, which, it's. Yeah, which, it's in the paperwork, right?
Yes.
Okay.
What's your process?
Okay, yeah, we'll just, we'll collect them all and give them to us.
I just wanted to make sure I didn't need to be.
You want to make sure it's done in the right order? Oh, God.
Unless you already did.
Send this stuff this way when it gets done.
You may have already done.
Yes. Um, we're missing four signatures. Did Dave Robinson sign these yet? Doesn't look like it.
What have you been doing?
Apparently, signing the wrong documents.
Okay, this one, everybody's signed.
Can you go over these again now?
No. Okay, that one's done. Here's where I start signing again. I seem to remember doing this last year, having a ton of stuff to sign.
It was a, it was a three million that, that was the initial issuance of the three million, and we're just rolling it over, and unfortunately, you have to do the same thing all over again.
I was gonna say, I have a funny feeling.
What happens when we do the full bonding?
More paper, more signatures.
More trees have gone ahead and given their all for this borrowing.
Yeah, I know.
I don't know why we have Ron signing this stuff, because you can't read his writing anyway.
Same every time.
Thank you, my friend.
Oh, yeah, treasurer and town clerk signature spots. No, you have to sign that.
Oh, I do?
Yep. And, and Ron has to squiggle on it.
How do we miss one?
Because it started down at that end.
Oh. This is good live TV, I can tell you that.
Yeah.
It's all their fault. I tried to liven it up by reading all those silly things.
Sorry, you need to vamp a little bit to fill in the, the town section.
I beg your pardon. Who are you talking to?
You. We've got some dead air here. We need, something we need to fill the dead air.
Wow, I have no, no comment, Ron.
Hey, what can I say? It was a long 12-hour day at work for me today.
Want to go into the stabilization?
Uh, am I allowed to go into? Okay, I, I want to make sure, well, okay. Well, Ron is finishing up signing. Request approval to use stabilization funds in FY19 for construction projects to reduce borrowing costs. Pleasure of the board.
Want to hear about it?
Should we make a motion first, then hear about it?
Yeah.
Because then we'll have discussion. So do I hear a motion?
Absolutely, that's.
Do I hear a second?
That's been the plan all along.
And now, will you please, ladies, please enlighten us on what we're doing here?
So the reason why we're making this request today is, this is actually sort of a, and in case of, we don't actually think we probably will need to move forward with this, but we are not borrowing for the police station, the library, or the track and field just yet. That, we are borrowing in October, that's when we expect to. So just in terms of, our cash flow right now is very healthy, so most likely, we won't even need these funds. But it's a, more of a just in case, because we do have significant capital expenditures over the summer for the projects that I just mentioned. I believe with our existing cash flow, we can handle it, but if, you know, it comes down that we do need an additional cash flow, we are requesting two point, to borrow internally, $2.5 million from the stabilization fund. We'd prefer not to, because we prefer to keep it in our investment account, because it makes significant interest. So we won't even.
Does that amount need to be in our motion?
Uh, I, I would guess, yes.
Yes.
Okay, what was that?
Not to exceed.
Not, yeah, not to exceed.
Two million what?
2.5 million.
From stabilization for capital projects. Sorry, you're gonna fill this dead air.
You need to shut up.
All right, so we need to have an amended motion, then, for, so it would read, I would love to have a motion requ, uh, move, have a motion to use an amount not to exceed $2,500,000 from stabilization in FY19, uh, construction park, projects to reduce borrowing costs.
I'll make that motion.
Seconded. Discussion, hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Aye as heaven, it's always better to be safe than sorry, Meg.
We, and, uh, we do actually need a signature on this. I'm washing, I'm so sorry.
Can I charge my signature here?
Can I ask one question?
Yes, Dave.
Before we vote?
No, we already voted.
We already voted. Aye. The question is, or I, I guess I just thought of was, um, we're giving you authorization just in case, I mean, is, is there some way, some means to get that information to us to let us know that you are going to do it? It's, there has to be some sort of a follow-up, I would assume.
Well, not really, and let me tell you why, because the, the town meeting has already authorized X number of dollars for the projects.
Okay.
So really, is what we're doing is just managing cash flow, and as part of managing cash flow is, we use our cash on hand as the first priority. We use our stabilization as the second priority, because it's still our money.
Right.
And then, when we are running close to low on those, then that's when we go out to a third-party bond, and we'll come in and do a band, or we'll go to, to permanent financing. Now, we know as these projects kick on, that come this later fall, that we're going to be going out for permanent financing for the whole, um, you know, basically $10 million minus one, uh, plus the four, $3 million for the sports complex. So it really comes down to just managing cash flow, and it just gives us the, more tools to work with, so we can better manage the money. And, um, you know, as cash flow comes in, we move it right back on.
Yeah, I got all, I mean, I understand that, it's, you know, well explained, but the, the statement was, I don't think we're gonna need it, but if we do need it, we need authorization. So I was just looking for a feedback group on that.
Yeah, I think what you're getting at is, if we do have to do it, could you let us know?
Sure, absolutely. And just as, and just to clarify to you, that this money does get repaid back to the stabilization fund at the end of the year. It's, it's just a, a temporary internal borrowing.
A short-term loan.
Yeah, exactly. Also, Lori believes that something might be still floating around up there.
Do you still have the vote of selectmen?
Hmm?
The vote of.
The, the vote that you did? Oh, you had it.
Oh, okay. Never mind, disregard that.
Okay, so, did we take a, did we vote that yet?
Yeah.
Yes, we did, okay. Okay, now we also have a request to raise fees on demands and MLCs by Finance Director Meg Lemay and Treasurer/Collector Lori Henall. I'll have you explain that one before we make a motion on that.
Lori's gonna take the.
And into the microphone, please.
There's two pages.
I don't see stickies on that word.
No, no signatures.
So as the authority of.
Mike, please, yeah, so the people at home can hear you.
Okay. As the duties of the, the collector, um, according to the Mass. General Law 60, which is the, um, collection of taxes, section 15 specifically, um, relates to the fees of the collector. And if you look at, um, number two on the second page of the handout, um, it gives the collector the authority, um, for each written demand to, to, um, incur a fee on demands not more than $30. So currently, the Town of Carver charges $5 for demand fees. So this is a fee that we would charge to taxpayers that are delinquent in paying their taxes. And I did a survey with all the different, um, towns within Plymouth County, which is that first page that I had provided. And if, if you look down, only two of the towns, um, charge $5 for demand fees. The majority of them charge $15 or, or more. So I'm requesting that the demand fees be increased to $10. You know, it's only penalizing the taxpayers that are delinquent in paying their taxes, and we do have some repeat, you know, offenders of this. You know, we do give the taxpayers 30 days to make their payments, um, and we give them many different options on how to make the payment. You know, they can come into the collector's office and pay by either cash, check, money order, we even, um, have the credit card swipe capability now. You know, they can pay online, they can go to the Carver website and, um, you know, pay online there, or they can just mail it into our P.O. box. So we, we give them multiple, um, options of, to make their payments. So, um, you know, I, I just think that, oh, go ahead, looks like you had a question.
Can I just add one more thing to that?
Was that obvious?
Lori, how long does it take your staff to process a demand fee? I mean, a demand certification?
A demand certification. So we have to, um, go into the system and, um, run some reports, and then we have to send a file over to our deputy collector, who creates the bills. So, um, it's a little time-consuming, but.
More than half an hour, more than an hour?
To run a whole, because we have to run a due, um, delinquency due report, um, and review it to make sure that, um, we didn't, you know, put something into the wrong, um, that it's, that it's a valid, um, demand fee. So, yeah, I would say half hour to an hour.
And the reason why I wanted to bring that up to you is because, you know, we do have some frequent flyers that do this for whatever reason, but every time they have to go through this process, it is a time-consuming effort with limited staff to do that. So, you know, it's not only just raising the fee because of what others are charging, it's really also raising the fee, given the, the time effort that goes into doing it to cover their costs. Because in essence, their cost should be running the town, not necessarily doing demand fees, that should be an extra payment, because you need extra service. It's almost, you need to look at it from that perspective, and, you know, it's up to you to, to raise the numbers, but I think Lori's being very conservative when she's giving the $10 number. I'll just leave it at that, that that may still be low, uh, but there clearly needs to be something that if, it, it's costing them more than $5 or, or, you know, per half an hour to, to process this whole thing.
Right.
And we, we try to have our fees equal what the level of effort is in the town, for just about anything we do.
What happens to these fees?
They go to the general.
They go to the general fund? Okay, that's, so David, you got a question?
I don't know, is a question, is maybe a, a concern or something. I'm thinking that if somebody's having a hard time paying their taxes, it seems counterproductive to charge them more for that, uh, service. Doesn't quite sit right with me, to be quite honest with you. Although I understand the purpose, I understand it takes you more time to do that, um, but it also, on the other end, people that pay a month in advance and pay their taxes in full, it takes you almost zero time at all to do that. I'm, I'm just wrestling with the idea of the benefit of, uh, charging more for something that people are having a hard time paying for anyways. It just doesn't, it doesn't feel good.
Kind of using it as a deterrent, you know, if people know that, you know, the fees are gonna be more, then they're going to make more of an effort to get them paid on time.
I would think that the, the word habitual, um, performer came up, I guess is the right word. Is there any way to make this, uh, you know, if you, if you're late four times, five times, then we'll increase, or it's just every, if somebody had a bad year, lost their job, trying to pay taxes, now you're gonna say, I'm gonna charge you 10 more bucks?
The collector does have the discretion to waive up to $15.
Okay.
So, I mean, if, if it was like a, a situation where.
Hardship case or something of that nature.
She does have the discretion to waive that.
This is mostly focused towards the, um, criminally, uh, active people.
Criminal.
That didn't come out.
Mr. Robinson, I mean, we do have the ability to do payment plans with people, so certainly, you know, I always use the, the, the point that we're running a business here, that's what we're doing.
Yeah, of course.
But I use the category, it's a socially responsible business, so there are times where the treasurer does have the ability of doing that, and there are times where we do put together payment plans. But there are also times where there's a lot of wheel spinning and a lot of effort that's being done through no fault of the staff at all, but now they've got to do this extra work.
Yep.
And we'd like to be able to just make sure that.
I'm okay with it, yeah, I just thought I'd ask.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the, raising the fee to $10.
Second that.
All right, motion made and seconded. Discussion, besides me.
Just, uh, along Mr. Robinson's, uh, point, I, I wouldn't want to see us using this as a fundraiser, but I think offsetting the cost of, uh, handling the, uh, late, uh, payers is, is not unreasonable. I just, I, I, I agree with Mr. Robinson as well. I, I would hope that if, perhaps it's somebody's first time, that we could waive that fee or something, because I, I would hate to see somebody that's having a hard time, you know, it makes it even harder when you have to pay additional fees, so.
To Mr. Clark's question, I mean, by going from $5,000, $5 to $10, on an annual basis, we collect about $7,000, so it's going from seven to 14,000. So it's, it's not a huge number, it's just being more responsible for that. So we're not making a lot of money off this.
Sarah.
Yeah, I just, I, I had the same concern that, that Dave does, but I do know that you have the discretion, Lori, to, you know, help people out and, as, as much as you can. So that's a, that's a good thing.
My turn. Um, I'm gonna be the bad guy here. I noticed that our friends on our northern border, it's $25, on our western border, $15, on our southern border, $15, on our eastern border, $15. I, especially given that the treasurer can, by statute, can go ahead and waive up to $15 for the hard, you know, for the hard luck cases, I'd really prefer to see the demand fee go up to $15, because, so then maybe somebody might be less inclined to need it, to do it. So that's my thought. Comment on my comment?
I, I think I will take their lead, um, for the recommendation. I'm, they answered my question completely and thoroughly. I believe they've given this great thought, and so I'll lean on their expertise.
Okay. All right, hearing no other discussion. Uh, those in favor, uh, I will, yeah, we had the motion and seconded, so all those approving the motion for $10, uh, demand fees to be, uh, charged by the, either the Finance Director, Meg Lemay, or the Treasurer/Collector Lori Henall, uh, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. With those opposed, it's unanimous. That's it, ladies.
Thank you very much, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, moving on. Proposed stream name recommendation to Grumpy's, Grumpy's Brook. What was, do we know what it was called before?
If I may, Mr. Chair, so I am the proponent in this proposed stream naming. It doesn't have a name, it's an unnamed, um, Brook. It's a perennial stream. This Brook runs through the, the North Carver, the coal property in North Carver. And also, Grumpy's sister Claire Smith is here today. I was wondering if I could read a short piece of the, um, U.S. Board of Geographic Names description of, about Grumpy and why the, the stream should be named for him, and then maybe she could.
Would she like to come forward and be able to discuss?
Absolutely, sure.
Would you please come on up?
Absolutely. Yeah, she's been waiting a while.
I mean, if we have a relative of the.
Let her go first.
Just your name and why we should do this.
My name is Claire Smith. Um, I'm from Wareham, I'm actually the town moderator, so thank you for allowing me to come before you and to speak with you. Sarah had approached me several months ago, um, about this project. My brother Bob was on the Conservation Commission in Carver for about eight years. He had a passion for the environment, uh, he was a photographer of nature, and he used his photography as a way of teaching people about what we had in our surrounding area, and wanting them to notice what we have and pay attention to what we have. And he used his photography in a way to educate everybody about that. I have continued with that, um, he left an enormous legacy, um, worked a lot with Mass. Audubon, Mass. Bird, Mass. Wildlife, uh, the Conservancy. Wildlife, uh, the Conservancy, um, almost all of the D C R. We didn't realize the impact that he had until after he passed away. And at his funeral, there were over three hours of people speaking about his legacy and what he left behind. So when Sarah approached me about this, um, I wholeheartedly said to her that we would support her effort. I just would like to read you, I think, just something that will help you to understand, Bob, and why I think it would be appropriate to name this stream, because this was Bob. "I will walk in the woods forever, gazing at its beauty and all that it offers to my eyes. I will dwell upon the beauty of its plants, its flowers, and see the radiance of abundant color. I will listen to the songs of the birds as they sing softly in the air. I will sit under the trees and converse with the animals because they've invited me into their home. And I will share with all through my eyes so that you might see it as I do. And I ask that you protect it for future generations so they may enjoy its beauty as well." And that was Bob.
That's beautiful.
So I think naming this Brook, which is unnamed on a piece of property that when Bob served on the Conservation Commission, he helped find, um, would be an appropriate legacy for this town, uh, to honor him by. And so I would ask and hope that you would support Sarah's efforts in moving forward with this process. It's, uh, it's not an easy process, and it's a long process, and, um, this is just the next step. So I would, I would ask that you support her in this. I think it would be a tremendous legacy, uh, for Bob.
Very nice, thank you.
Thank you, Claire.
Ms. Hewens, anything else to add?
Yes, I just, if I may, I'd like to read the case summary that was, um, produced by the U.S. Board of Geographic Names. It's short, don't worry.
Okay.
It's partially based on, uh, the, for some information I gave them. I'm sure it's also based on some information they got from the family, maybe from the obituary. Um, that this stream, one of the reasons it is important is it's on the coal property, which was bought with, um, it's Article ninety-seven land, so it was bought with state funds primarily. We also bought it with Community Preservation Act money. So it was a joint effort of a lot of people, a lot of work went into this. Um, the, the site is about a two-hundred-and-twenty-one acre site, and the reason it came to our attention in the first place is because the property owner, that, that land had been in one family since the sixteen hundreds, it was a Kings grant. And when the, uh, head of the family passed away, his daughter decided to, um, sell it to a developer. And he proposed two-hundred-and-fifty, uh, forty B rental units on the site. I'm a big fan of doing affordable housing right, and it's just not the right place for affordable housing. There were endangered species up there. Um, and as we discovered, this Brook is one of the headwater, water, uh, streams, headwaters of the Taunton River. It flows from a spring into the Winnetoxit, which flows into the Taunton River. There are other headwaters too.
Yep.
So this is a zero-point-eight mile long stream, uh, currently unnamed. Uh, the stream would commemorate Robert "Bob" Grumpy Conway, nineteen forty-six to two-thousand and ten, who, as a member of the Carver Conservation Commission, worked to preserve the land through which the stream flows. The proponent, the proponent is the retired conservation agent, that's me, who worked with Mr. Conway to protect the property from development. According to his obituary, Mr. Conway was a pleasant person who got his nickname from an uncharacteristically sharp response to a waitress who called him Grumpy. After serving in Vietnam as a generator mechanic, Mr. Conway worked as a bog foreman for the eighty makepiece company. He also served as the company's informal environmental officer and documented rare flora and fauna in cranberry bogs throughout southeastern Mass. While delineating wetlands on the property through which the stream flows, Mr. Conway discovered the stream source at an underground spring. He was also an award-winning nature photographer. The proponent believes that naming this stream, and then he made an error, it says "for Mr. Carver," but he might have all been called Mr. Carver, um, Mr. Conway, is appropriate because he worked to preserve the land through which it flows.
Cool.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? Okay, I don't think there's, this is kind of a no Brook brainer. I think, you know, I loved hearing comments and...
Loved it, yeah.
So all those in favor of naming the unnamed Brook to Grumpy's Brook, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Five-zero unanimous.
And I just, real quick, I, I should have said this earlier, I want to point out that originally...
You already voted aye, don't worry.
No, 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 originally, um, the idea to call this Brook Grumpy's Brook came from Dan Fortier, who used to be, was a longtime chair of the Conservation Commission and a great admirer of Grumpy, so I can't take all the credit here.
All right, moving on.
Thank you, thank you for being here tonight.
Yes, thank you, Claire.
Moving on, if anybody remembers our last Board of Selectmen meeting, we did go into executive session to discuss the, um, town administrator's contract. Uh, and we'll announce the results of that. Basically, what happened was, it was mainly fine-tuning language in his contract. Part of the language, uh, to be clarified is how many hours he can get paid for outside work. What he does for the town, not what he does in place of working for the town. He still works, it's eight hours a day, forty day, forty hours a week, fifty-two weeks a year, minus vacation for the town. So the town's still getting, you know, it's the proper amount of work. In fact, he generally works more than that. But he was, by the contract, only allowed to be paid for eight hours of outside work. Now, if he, give me an example, if he went home after a long day and said, "I'm going to work on the, for this, uh, my other job for two hours a day." So at the end of a week, he'd have gone ahead and worked ten hours, but he was only able to get paid for eight of that. So that being the case, the board went ahead and we voted to go ahead and, uh, increase that to, up to sixteen hours a week that he can go ahead and be paid for, uh, on a second, on a second employment. Then we had, uh, clarifying language that Mr. Clark had presented, just explaining what is allowed and not allowed, uh, cleared by town council. And finally, what we did was, we did not make any changes to any monetary, uh, payments to the town administrator, but we did take the opportunity, uh, since he'd already worked off one year of his five-year contract, we re-extended it to a five-year contract. And that is the sum total of what we did. I would entertain a motion to go ahead and make it so we can release the minutes from the executive session, since that was all that was discussed.
So moved.
By your second? Mr. Milenowski, do you have a problem with that?
Not at all.
All right, any further discussion? About, and I know this, this falls under the, you know, less than forty-eight hours notification, but it just occurred to me while we were talking about this, so, you know, something needed, needed to be released, I'd rather release it now than keep it back, you know, in an executive style.
Mm-hmm.
All right, all those in favor of releasing the executive minutes, executive session minutes from our last meeting, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Five-zero. All right, moving right along. Serped Joint Transportation Planning Group representative appointment. We're being asked to appoint John Woods as the primary, with the alternate being Chris Vincent.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion? Do you want to explain this a little bit, Mr. Milenowski?
Uh, this is just a renewal from last year.
It's something we do every year.
That's right. Basically, the transportation group is, they oversee the, the federal transportation money that goes to southeastern Mass, so that's why John and Chris have been doing this for a couple of years.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the reappointment of John Woods and alternate Chris Vincent, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? Serped Commission, Commission Member Appointment, uh, Stephen Cole, was he our commission?
Replacing Marlene.
He's replacing Marlene.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Somebody second?
I did.
I know, I heard two of them.
Sorry.
One on each year. Discussion? Did Mr. Cole make it known to you that he would like to fill this position?
We made sure that Mr. Cole was aware that he...
Okay. I just want to make sure. All right, hearing no more discussion. All those in favor of Stephen Cole becoming, uh, be appointed member of the Serped Commission, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes, hevets, five-zero. All right, next on our agenda, Old Colony Elder Services Representative Appointment, Carol Julius.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded. Discussion, Mr. Milenowski?
Uh, a renewal.
It's a renewal, okay. And she has agreed to...
She's absolutely volunteered.
Okay, I just want to make sure, you know, that we're not appointing somebody that has heartburn about it.
Sometimes we do that too.
Yeah, I know, like as a chairman. All right, any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of appointing, uh, Carol Julius as a representative to the Old Colony Elder Services, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, passes five-zero. All right, Old Colony Regional Voc-Tech Joint Appointment, uh, the reappointing Donald Williams for a three-year term.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Uh, okay, motion made and seconded. I believe the, uh, school committee's already taken this up.
Yes, they have.
And had, did we get ahold of the new town moderator?
I sent him an email, yes.
Did he respond?
Uh, no, but I will contact him tomorrow.
Okay.
So this is the second of the three votes.
All right, so we still got a need to get the town moderator's vote, so I'm sure he's probably not aware, you need, he even needs to do this, but, you know, surprise is a good thing. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of reappointing Donald Williams for a three-year term to the Old Colony Regional Voc-Tech Joint, uh, Voc-Tech, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Five-zero. Next up, request to conduct a town-wide council on aging needs study. I'll take the lead in this discussion, if you don't mind. Uh, basically, this is starting over on our decision to try to come up with a new C O A building. It was quite clear to us at a couple of meetings and through social media that we did not do a good job the first time around.
I don't know that I'd phrase it that way.
Well...
There was disagreement over the process.
There, there certainly was disagreement. Anyway, um, basically, we're going back to start from scratch. Now, I know a lot of people are demanding that we do go right to a feasibility study. Well, you can't do a feasibility study till you know what you need to feasibility for. So to have that, we need a town-wide needs assessment. Make sure we're getting input from all the villages, not just mainly from one village and nobody else. Also, those that still are living, have their own homes, we have to reach out to them. What do the, all the seniors want, all three thousand plus, as opposed to twenty or thirty plus? I think it's very important that we completely have this first step completed, so that's what we're recommending, um, and I'd like to see this approved, uh, tonight. Discussion?
So if I could just add to that, Mr.?
Go ahead.
So what we have here is, um, you know, again, the last process started off and was initiated by the Council on Aging Board of Directors, who represent the senior population. So, uh, under Paula Babbin, they did a really good job going out and finding out what the community wanted. However, there was a disagreement between them and the few people that end up using the facility, and that's where the disconnect was. It's not that they didn't properly represent the people, they did, but then with Paula's passing, you lost that institutional knowledge, so when you didn't have somebody defending all the hard work that she was spearheading on. So I just want to make sure that she gets all the due credit that she deserves for what she did. Now, that being said, is that, um, when I was in a previous town, what I did is, I went out and hired, um, UMass Boston's, uh, basically their geriatric institute that oversees, um, uh, working with senior populations. And what we had them do is go out and do a town-wide survey to really find out what the needs of the population are. And that's what I'm proposing that we do again, and I have a committee that I want to share with you, uh, to go forward and do that. But I also want to bring to your attention that, um, kind of addressing the issue, I was at the, um, Council on Aging Board of Directors meeting last week, and I want to share this with you, is that with them, um, there were also a few of the regular people that visit that, that we've heard, who opposed, uh, going into a new facility. And we were talking about, you know, what improvements need to happen. And, um, obviously, building improvements need to happen, the building is not perfectly safe and has issues with it. But they talked about, a couple of years ago, the cook and the food was really bad. And as a result of that, we went out and hired a new cook, and everybody down there thinks the food is fabulous. And, um, another problem they had is they didn't have enough programs. Couple of years ago, we went out and hired a program director and added more programs. So we addressed two of the outstanding issues that had occurred. So I, I said, "Okay, so now that we've addressed those, how much has our clientele, our customers gone up in those two years?" And surprisingly, what was told to me is that, I said, "It's actually had the opposite effect," is that we had more people going down there daily two, three years ago than we have today. I said, "But," is a logical thing, we fixed the food, we've added more programs, we've added more services, why would that not draw people down there? And, you know, no one could really answer the question. And that's the question that we need to answer, is what do the customers want? What do the, does the community in that age cohort want? What do they need? Everyone thinks they know the solution, because we've heard them talk about it the last few meetings. But when we've implemented their solutions, and they said it's the problem, clientele's gone down. So obviously, we're getting the wrong information, or we're not getting enough information that's out there. So, again, this was a study that was done before. So I have reached out to several, um, residents of the community, try to create a balanced community, because we know what the users want, which is, you know, again, a couple handfuls want for the facility, but we don't know what the rest of the town wants. And our town is a little bit complicated because we have these several villages within our town. These villages within our town have their own clubhouse, have their own programs, have their own bus tours. They operate independent of the town. We want them to work together, but again, they, they, they moved into, um, you know, whether it's South Meadow Village or Cranberry Village, or whatever it is, for a reason, and that's their own community. And so we need to find out in those groups as well, is if we offered everything they wanted, would they even come, or are they going to stay into their village? Now, we know some leave, but, you know, if we have five hundred, um, uh, people in a particular, uh, village, if, if we find out that four-hundred-and-ninety of them just want to stay with where they are, well, that helps us better design what we need. So again, in reaching out to the community, um, I've had a few, uh, people that I've reached out that I think would, would put together this committee very well. And Savory Moore, um, who was on the Master Plan Committee, has agreed to help out and kind of spearhead hiring a consultant to come in and actually go out and do this survey. George Callahan has also committed that he would be interested in doing it. Ken Morrison, our retired veterans agent, has volunteered, uh, to be part of this five-member committee. I also have Joanne Nelson of, um, South Meadow Village, she has agreed to do it as well. And the fifth person that I'm asking, uh, to do it is, uh, an individual out of Cranberry Village, so we've got people, two people living in two of the different villages, plus three citizens around the community that are, that are in the, the elderly age, to kind of be diverse, and one of those is a veteran, uh, has ties to the veterans population, to come out and help provide guidance to doing this quantitative analysis of the town. And the intent here is that, um, I will find some money to go out and hire these folks to do an independent survey of every individual over a certain population, um, and use this committee to do it. Now, once this committee completes its task, it should have quantifiable information that it will then give to the Council on Aging Board of Directors, it will then give to the selectmen, and it will no longer be hearsay. It'll no longer be who yells the loudest, or who screams the loudest, or who blogs and posts on Facebook the most. It'll be a quantitative review that we, as a town, then can then accurately figure out what the next step is, um, for working with this population. So that's kind of what the motion is here, is, um, to conduct this town-wide study. And again, um, I've put together a five-member team, I've named four of the people, I'm waiting for the fifth one, um, just to, to connect with. And, um, and that's what the intent is, is to come back with a quantitative analysis of what the customers want and how best, and then we, as a town, can take that information and figure out how best to... then we, as a town, can take that information and figure out how best to, uh, proceed in trying to respond and provide services that we can afford within our financial plan that satisfies what they actually need, versus, again, who yells, screams, or posts the most will have real information.
And also, if I could, um, again, people were saying, you know, their complaint was we didn't do a townwide feasibility study, we only were looking at an extension to the library. Well, the reason we did that is because in Town Meeting 2017, the article that came up with the $25,000 for a feasibility study clearly states in the motion that it's $25,000 for feasibility study of COA extension of the library.
That's correct.
It's not, it even can be used for anything else. So part of what this process is going to involve, once we're done with, and we get all the information we need from the, um, needs study, uh, needs study, then we'll have to go and go before Town Meeting to come up with some money for a feasibility study. And I know there was at least one resident that was concerned to make sure we would not spend any more of the leftover $25,000 from the original article, and there's no way we can spend any of that money. So what we'll have to do is go with a motion for Town Meeting to go ahead and withdraw that money to apply to a, uh, more detailed feasibility study. So there are steps we are going to have to follow. And part of those steps is going to require us to go back to Town Meeting and ask for moving of monies from a fund that's not being used anymore, take those residual monies so we be able to use them for what their original intent was, just expanding it beyond a addition to the library.
That's correct. I mean, I know there was some discussion, well, let's propose we study here, here, and here, but we can't until Town Meeting tells us we can. And what I'm proposing here is not a study on where, what's proposed here is to set up this committee to find out what people want, what the customer, what the senior resident wants in town for services. And then we have to figure out what we can afford, and then go from there.
Then, I hear, before we get to discussion, can I hear a motion first?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded. Now discussions, Ms. Hewens.
Thank you, quick question. So, Michael, I just wanted to, I think you said this, but I just wanted to make sure the survey includes, um, people over a certain age who don't live in the villages as well.
Townwide, yes.
Apparently.
Yes, I remember, I stressed not only the villages...
You pointed that out, yeah.
But also seniors that live in their own homes.
Mm-hmm, because that's a pretty big group of people.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, it's a pretty good group of people, and again, I, I just have to emphasize, is when you look at Carver's population, we have this big of a base. But in reality, we have several, again, villages, and some of those villages already offer a full complement of services that the town doesn't provide. And we just have to figure out where that falls in the spectrum of what people want.
Any other discussion, questions, comments?
My only thought would be that when we include people in the survey, I think we should include not just current seniors, but people that maybe are going to become seniors in the next five, 10 years. You know, we have an aging population, and by the time we're able to build something, certainly it's going to be, those seniors' population's going to be bigger, so I think we should think about it.
Fifty or 55?
Fifty, 55, yes. That's my thought.
Yeah.
Did I say, did I hear something over there?
No, no, on that, um, that's one of the things that we would take a look at, is where's that cutoff, is it, you know, it's, it's something less than 65, and whether that, I mean, I remember I, I got slapped by a person who I commented on, you know, and, and it wasn't really slapped, but it was more of a thing, I said, well, you know, we're working with the senior population, and this person was probably 72, "Sonny, I'm not a senior." You know, and it was one of those type things. So the word is, it means different to different people, you know, we have people that are in their 80s that could go out and walk five miles and, and do all kinds of stuff, versus people in their 40s that can't walk a quarter mile, you know, and I'm using a physical component down there. So this pendulum on the age in these studies really changes, but, uh, it is something less than 65, we just got to figure out what that right number is.
Okay, thank you.
Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Passes unanimous, five zero. Moving on, we're almost done with the Selectment Section, yay. Uh, discussion on the role of the Commission on Disability and future appointments being T, uh, Town Administrator Appointments.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, um, in your packet, and I think on your desk, you actually have in our bylaws, um, the framework for the Commission on Disability, on pages nine, 10, and 11 of our bylaws. I wanted to just give that to you, to have you take a look at. We do have several applicants, um, that want to join this, and there's been some other people, we've done some outreach to, that also want to join this group. Um, I'm giving you these documents, because as you look at this, I want you to make sure that this is the direction that you guys envision this group going. A Commission on Disabilities Group is a very, very powerful and regulatory board in a community, um, and, and they have some sweeping authority. And, um, again, I just wanted to bring this to your attention, for you to kind of read through. At our next meeting is, um, you know, I will have recommendations for people joining that, again, trying to keep it a diverse committee, so it represents different populations of the town. But, um, again, this is just more of a heads up, that, um, there's now interest in making this committee active, and it is a very powerful committee, and I just want you to re-review the scope and make sure that that's what your thoughts are.
And we'll take it up again at our next meeting.
That's correct.
So no vote?
No vote.
Required on this? No, um, motion needs to be made?
Nope.
All right, 8:45.
You have some extra items.
Yes, I saw that. Yeah, we're a little behind schedule, but not bad. All right, we do have, uh, a few unforeseen 48 hours in advance of the meeting. First off, we'll handle, uh, basically, um, it says, membership, this is to the county, Plymouth County Advisory Board membership for FY 2019. Helen was our previous rep, and we need to come up with a new representative for this advisory board. Comments? Truders? The membership may consist, according to statute, of any member of the Board of Selectmen, Town Council, or Mayor of the City of Brockton, or his designee, who must be a member of the city council, so therefore, it's got to be one of us.
Well, I think the individual that used to sit next to me was the previous representative, and I think it makes sense that the individual sitting next to me now become the new representative, so I would recommend that Mark Townsend for this post.
You putting that in the main form of emotion?
I am.
Do I hear a second?
Oh, Mark, I just feel so bad doing this, but I got a second.
All right, now discussion. First off...
Tell me what the purpose of, what this organization does.
Get that later, no, 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 you get that later.
Basically, in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 35, Section 28B, as amended, it is hereby requested that each Board of Selectmen, Town Council, and the Mayor of the City of Brockton notify this office in writing of their advisory board representative for fiscal year July 1, 2018 to June 30, 2019. And it doesn't say what this group does.
Well, if I, if I, if you remember, Helen had to go to a few meetings when they were looking to significantly increase salaries, uh, for employees...
Oh, yeah.
And had, and had to vote as to whether or not to support that. I think there were some health insurance issues as well that came up, so that it's really anything that, uh, is, that the commissioners are required to, uh, bring before the board.
That affects all of Plymouth County.
Yeah.
Right.
And the, and the employees thereof.
Because they're the Plymouth County Commissioners, yeah.
Right.
Oh, it's fine.
So you don't, you're not vehemently opposed to that? You can stay on the board, then. All right, uh, motion made and seconded, any other discussion? Hearing none. All those of appointing Mr. Townsend as our representative to the Plymouth County Advisory Board membership for FY 2019, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Congratulations, welcome aboard.
Well deserved, Mike.
I'm assuming that, uh, either the Town Administrator or, uh, the real person in charge will make sure by email that the, they...
Is that a sworn-in position?
Huh?
Real person in charge, yeah.
Yeah, that's what I said.
Oh.
All right, another we have unforeseen 48 hours in advance of a meeting. It's a request by St. John the Baptist Club for a dance and festival at 53 Silvers Street. That's where it's going to be located. Uh, this is for June 23rd and 24th, uh, expecting, uh, for 100 to, uh, up to 100-plus to attend. It is open to the public, they are doing it to make money, and there's going, they're looking for the, uh, approval for a sale of all alcoholic beverages.
So one, one-day liquor license?
Yeah, it's actually a two.
Two-day liquor license?
Yep.
It's like 24 hours.
Yeah, it's 24 hours.
24 hours. It's basically noon to noon.
Noon to 12 a.m.
Noon to 12 a.m., then 12 p.m. to 11 p.m. the next day. So...
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second that.
Motion made and seconded, this is something, uh, they have every year, so it comes before us. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Also, we have a request to use town-owned property by Robert Aiken, uh, from the Environmental Police Officer Association, uh, used, uh, for Sampson's Pond for May 31st, from 6 a.m. to 4 p.m. It's a fishing tournament, number of people expected to attend is 30, number of cars that would be around there parked is anticipated to be 15. So, um, what's the board's pleasure on this?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion made and seconded to approve.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, this would be a, we're not refunding the fee on this one, correct? It's not a church group or anything, okay. Any other discussion?
It's a great, Thursday, from 6:00 in the morning till 4:00, couldn't be a better time to do it, so, although it is for the Environmental Police Officer Association, you wonder who's going to be policing the environment.
Well, I wasn't going to go down that road.
But I, I think it's a great deal.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving this request, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it, passed unanimous, five zero. All right, going on with the minutes, uh, from our meeting of...
No, there's, there's more. Okay, never mind, I, so I was misinformed.
Oh.
I was going to say, you could have been, you know, you didn't have to give up this chair, I mean, I saw how fast you gave it up once I walked in the room.
Just out of respect, Ellen.
Uh-huh, yeah, right. Anyway, uh, minutes of April 3rd, 2018.
Make a motion to approve?
As amended?
As amended.
Second.
Discussion.
I'm going to abstain from this.
Yep.
Of course.
All right, all those in favor of approving minutes of April 3rd, 2018, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Four zero one. All right, we have another special, 18 one-day special license request. This is our annual request from King Richard's Fair, first for every weekend in September, uh, starting on September 1st, including holidays, Labor Day, and, um, Columbus Day, with their last day being October 21st, and I'm assuming this will only go into effect once we make sure they paid all their taxes and fees and everything else up front. What's the pleasure of the board? Do I hear a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, further discussion? Hearing none. Actually, when they're selling liquor, is that getting impacted by our town, local town meals tax?
Well, the answer is it's supposed to be, um, but it's a cash business, so we...
Don't, don't go casting aspersions, the answer is yes.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Now, it...
I questioned their auditing process, I think it was two years ago.
Yes.
Uh, can I just, uh, I don't know if we meant, need to admit it, but we need to just make sure that they're up to date on taxes and so forth before...
That's what I just said.
Oh, I'm sorry, I missed that.
Taxes and fees up front.
Okay, sorry, my mistake, I should listen more closely.
Is there anything we can do to ask them to beef up their auditing, so we make sure we're getting a much better, a truer accounting of what they owe us?
We'll work with our financing and assessing department and the state DLR to see if we can, um, get some third-party review.
I mean, we're not suggesting anything's being done, but I think just because it is a cash business, I think it's always good, since there are no real receipts on this, if we could have a little more oversight, would not necessarily be a bad thing. All right, any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of granting these 18 one-day special licenses, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Five zero, unanimous. We have a request to use Sherliffe Park by Crossroads Church on Saturday, July 21st, from 8 a.m. to 5 p.m. They will need to obtain a certificate of insurance prior to the use, and they're requesting us to waive the fee. Is that a Saturday?
Yeah, Saturday, 7:21.
Will that not interfere with the farmer's market? That's on Sunday, okay.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded. Do we want to take up, are we going to grant their request to waive the fee?
That's included in my motion.
Okay. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor of, uh, approving the Crossroads Church use of Sherliffe Park on July 21st, uh, with a waiving of the normal fee, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Five zero. Next meetings coming up, June 26th, July 31st, September 4th, October 2nd, November 6th, and December 4th, and of course, we'll always add if we need to.
Yeah, I was going to suggest, I think, if not September, certainly October, I think we may have to go to at least two meetings a month to make sure...
Well, more than likely. I figure we can attack that when we get closer to it.
Would you motion where you, you, or the vice-chair can approve, um, use of town property on one-day special license in the absence of a meeting?
Can I have someone make that motion?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
For those who didn't hear, Elaine, could you speak a little louder into a microphone? What, what Mr. Clark's motion is?
We would like approval, uh, from the board to have the, uh, chairman or vice-chairman be allowed to approve use of town property or one-day special licenses in the absence of a meeting.
And any other, uh, time-sensitive issues?
That's what Mr. Clark's motion was.
Somewhat self-serving.
Yes, and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of allowing the chairman or vice-chair to sign short notice, uh, requests and things like that, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Eyes have it. Now, okay, we've already, do we need to go into executive session?
We do, and do you mind if I read the, um, the motion, because it's been modified a little bit?
Uh, sure, I, does anybody have an objection?
Uh, so it's exemptions one, two, three, and four. The motion is moved to go into executive session to discuss discipline or dismissal of a public employee's strategy regarding security personnel or devices that may have a detrimental effect on the town if held in open session, and to reconvene an open session for the purposes of adjournment.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. Do we have to identify the department, or are we not allowed to?
Allowed to.
All right. Further discussion? Hearing none. This will be a roll-call vote.